Welcome everyone to this annual plan council annual plan meeting. There is no public forum beginning of this, on to apologies. I move that council accept the apologies from councillor O'Malley for lateness, councillor Stedman for absence, and myself for absence Tuesday at seven and Wednesday the eighth, on which days you will be in the service of the clutches of the deputy mayor. Who now the second, who most say I. Against, carry. Confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that we confirm the agenda of following operations and without a standing or two point one option, send the doctor relations moving and sending the speaker to a member, send it to council stations, all those who favor the P S A I.
Aye.
Against, carry. For declarations of interest, I don't think anything's probably changed between now and previous meeting an hour ago, so I'll move that committee notes the elected members' interest register, attachment A, confirms their proposed management plan for elected members' interests, and notes the executive leadership team's interest register, also perhaps sending the council stations, all those who favor the P S A I.
Aye.
Against, carry. On to reports, number five, they're in schedule for the annual plan and late submissions. Sammy and Sharon were going to... So I will move, oh, Chan, sorry, I was looking for you at the other end. Is there anything you'd like to make your move on? Okay, are there any questions? I'll move that we note the report and that we accept the late submissions, if the council stands, anyone who should speak to that. I'll put it to those who favor the P S A I.
Aye.
Against, carry. Okay, submissions, we'll move on to those. And the first one, sorry, we're late, investment, no. Welcome. The next part of the interview.
Thank you. Thank you for making efforts to make the council work a bit more participatory and democratic, I really appreciate that. And for a start, I have to say something about my background, I'm originally from Vienna, I've only lived here for last two and a half years, so a lot of my ideas and my feedback are from that background. Regarding the annual plan, it's certainly full of good ideas, but it's not as ambitious or visionary as it could be in terms of sustainability and human friendliness. So let's get to the reports first. Turning George Street into the best friend song is a positive idea, and certainly necessary because we all know that New Zealand is the biggest, largest emitter of CO2 per capita in the whole OCD. Thirty percent of that comes from fuel combustion, so getting cars, especially possibly fuel cars on the road and alternatives on the road is crucial. So using rags and parking charges to decrease the bus fares is a great idea and certainly necessary. It can be that today it's cheaper to drive the car to work and then park the car on a whole day instead of using the bus to commute. Other ideas would be changing the payment system, like the loop is a great idea, and also for the rider zone, maybe introduce high intention twenty cents per stop with a cap of two dollars. So that bus system does not only come or check it, but also more available. There are more buses at peak times and also at low times, so if I want to go home at eight o'clock, I have to wait an hour for a bus. That's a bit odd. Pedestrian buses could be done in cooperation, of course, with the R C because I understand it's not the D C C's authority, and introducing night clients to have a bus, some bus lines running at night, maybe once an hour to discourage even more to get drunk drivers off the road or drunk walkers even. One of my more controlling ideas is a ferry to serve the porch arms and bottom bell of the business to get those cars up the road as well. And as you can see, I have a sidearm out there sitting on the chair, I'm excited to myself, so thank you for investing more to cycling networks. Maybe one could be, maybe a sidearm where they could be introduced to Swiss road, that would be great. Now just something where that comes in as more body, the rubbish waste system. Why is it rubbish? Because we waste so much waste. It's a commodity and that can be used, for example, the city could start a compost heap, a compost heap that A could produce fertilizer for farmers in the area, or even start a fire gas incinerator that could serve the city with heat and cover. Something else, maybe a recycling cleaning facility could be introduced because contamination is a big problem with plastic waste, and you know, you cannot export this plastic waste to other countries. Again, waste is a commodity and it can be used to create jobs and money. My last point is a social point, from my point of view, D C C lacks for its purpose is a public indoor space where people can come together without having to consume anything, without having to pay. That would strengthen our community, create encounters, and yes, that's it, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Councillors, questions. Councillor Boxer.
Thank you, just on that last point, and I always thought places like the library or the museums, we know some places and you don't see that, you're talking about that sort of place.
Yeah, so the museum closes at five p.m., so for anyone who works, they can't go there. And the library closes at eight p.m. anywhere, and you can't really go there till four, it's more of a quiet space.
Councillor Benjamin.
Thank you for your insightful comments. What would you say to the people in respect of your comments about the decentralisation of George Street, the central city in particular? What would you say to the people who demand the right to park their vehicle outside the shop they're intending to shop in? Or, and or retailers who would regard, who do regard sometimes the removal of vehicles from their street as the death knell for their business?
Well, funny that you mention that because there is a study that, for example, cyclists actually stop more often at shops because they know when they stop, they're passing, they think, ah, well, I need to stop and go and buy it. And it's the same for the issuance in regards to the customers that would like to park their cars in front of the shops. There are still garages around where they can park them.
Thank you. Councillor Elmer.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you for your input, yes, and one of the questions I think was about waste being a commodity, because we're looking at our waste strategy. In particular, you had a waste burning system or a fire gas incinerator in the mix there. Why, have you got some experience with that, or what was the thinking around that?
So when I was in school, many years ago, not so many years ago, in physics, we had to see a lot of villages around Vienna that had some fire gas incinerators. I don't have the experience myself, but maybe the UN has, or even the D C C could reach out to people down there and certainly try to connect you with some Australian fire gas plants.
Oh, thank you for that, and I just really like the way you say waste is a commodity, so, thank you.
Councillor Yew.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you for your submission and very well thought out, and you might have just brought that you're also a keen interest in setting, thank you for that. Just regarding the composting, have you seen that working at O S S as well? As councillor O S S said, we are looking at our waste strategy, and have you seen the composting system work out well as well?
Yes, so I heard in Vienna, when you go to the restaurant, you can get compost for fruit, and anyone can go there and get it. It works, and so how it's done in Vienna, everyone collects their compost at home in a little bin, and then there are big bins around the city that you can walk through and dispose your own in price.
That's a good question.
Any further questions, just no way? Thank you very much for your submission. Mr Brumbel, support the time. Well done, John. The more councillors may help.
I had certainly some prior material, just to give you an idea of the scope, range of the activities that we provide. Essentially, a submission for the first time in our organisation's history. It's second council's consideration to provide us with some direct support to offset the lease costs of our building of modern cartridges by council. So through a combination of fixed price contracts, that have had no inflation adjusted for an excess of five years, and increased demand for our services, particularly in the sport development capability area, where physical pressures on the sector, we're getting sports that are already struggling. We can go there, it could be three months to a year, and we're going to work with them, and that puts an incredible drain on our resources, so as a result, we're now starting to feel the pressure financially.
The other point we'd like to make in our submission is that we're very supportive of council parks and recreation department, and working alongside them, we commend council to provide sufficient funding for them to take a more strategic approach. It allows them to take a longer term planning aspect to the work that they're doing, so that council is then more informed in terms of priorities and can plan for future development, identify gaps in the system. And at that stage, I'll pass to Owen, Owen Bush, our sport development capability manager. He's been doing a lot of work with other regional councils and district councils on facility plan.
Thanks, John, so link to what John's poking out, this is the D C C's Parks and Rec strategy. It's a really good document adopted, I think, in 2017, and provides a good strategic framework to base a lot of this work from, but we think it needs a bit of a kickstart in terms of investment to actually get some of this stuff implemented. And the second point that John alluded to, that flows out of this, it's actually included in here, is our sport and recreation facilities plan for Dunedin. So we've been working with other councils around the region, including Waitaki. We've done this facility strategy for Waitaki and also in central Otago and Queenstown. And the idea behind these strategies is to enable council and other funders to prioritise and guide council investment to sport and recreation assets, doing it in a way that is organised and has some structure, and it gets away from actually having to respond to some of those ad hoc things that flow up. It allows you to stay at the head of the game in terms of maintenance and those sorts of things. You're also able to look at participation trends within sport and recreation and start to match those up with your facilities. If you've got sports that are growing in particular areas, and we've got a lack of facilities in those areas, you can start to match those things up. So Queenstown, for example, they're using the strategy to guide the development of their master plan, both the Queenstown and the Wanaka, and the Waitaki District Council, through their strategy have identified the need for a new recreation centre. So they're looking at their options around there at the moment, so just some practical examples of how it's being used. So we were obviously, we're asking or encouraging that council would look to put some funding towards the development of a sport and rec plan for Dunedin City. Thank you.
You have any questions?
Yes.
Councillor Yew.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you very much for your presentation, moreover, thank you very much for the work that you do and the document that you've supplied, obviously shows us that there's a hell of a lot more goes on than is visible to the public eye, but thank you for what you do, it's absolutely crucial. Just talking about participation trends, for Dunedin, which sport do you think is most under catered for on current growth?
Put me on the spot, Dan. There are growth sports, we know from the figures that basketball's grown a lot recently. Most of the other mainstream sports are pretty static or remaining the same in terms of their numbers, but then you've got other things, other new sports that pop up all the time that put increasing demand, we're talking about facilities, on facilities, but top of my head, if I had to say one that's grown recently or we've seen good numbers in basketball, you could probably say volleyball as well, particularly in secondary school.
Yeah, and particularly with footsleuth, huge growth in footsleuth, that's the booming sport at the moment.
And just to soothe their minds somewhat, anecdotally, there's all the children sitting inside playing screen time. I mean, how are our numbers in Otago, I mean, are we?
We effectively have the highest participation rates in the country, but we can't be complacent, we still have to put the work in to ensure that we remain up there. The general trend across New Zealand is for a decrease, and we have gender equity with in Otago as well, it's equal fifty fifty, women and girls, sorry, girls and boys.
Again, thank you very much for what you do.
Councillor Elmer.
I note that in Christchurch, when the earthquake happened, all the sports fields were affected, and effectively, I was talking to people from Christchurch, a generation missed out on sport. And I was just wondering, when it comes to facilities as a city, where do you think we're placed? Compared to other places?
I think we're extremely well placed, and that really comes down to you creating that best small city in the world. We're probably the best small city in New Zealand in terms of the facilities that we have for the size of the population, but they are aging, and there are gaps in the system, and that's where your facility plan comes in. It's planning for the future, but also addressing what you currently have and making sure that it's still meeting the need.
Another question, I note one weekend I went up to Big Easy. We had the Oceanas, we had, we had about four sports in Dunedin at that time, and they were like South Island champs or whatever. The whole Logan Park area was just humming, and I was just wondering a question about that. A lot of people who come to Dunedin because we've got fantastic facilities, stay here for a week. What do you think the economic impact of having great facilities is for Dunedin, given that people stay a long time?
It's huge, and each individual sport could give you a breakdown of the economic benefit to Dunedin. It would range between two to four million dollars for a medium sized sporting event in the city in terms of the economic benefit it brings. Larger events obviously generate more income for the city, and we're currently working through exercises which we will bring back to council, which tries to quantify what the impact of sport tourism is to the benefit of the city.
It's a good point, because we emphasise, you know, what an All Blacks test or a bigger event, and that seems to get a lot of attention in terms of what sort of revenue that brings, but that's once a year, this year we don't have one, those sorts of things. A lot of those smaller tier, tier under fifteen, national hockey tournaments, secondary schools, those sorts of things, probably go under the radar, so it's a good point.
Yeah, because I think sport and having great facilities does have the opportunity of bringing huge numbers of people to Dunedin who stay longer, and, you know, that was a thought I had. That's all, thank you, I've just forgotten my other question, sorry.
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you, Your Worship. John, just following up on your submission, can you just elaborate further about the request for rate submission assistance and bring it more in line with the other sports organisations around the country?
Yeah, well, we're really seeking a grant to offset the lease cost. In comparison with a lot of the other regional sports trusts that occupy council facilities, they're around the thirty five to forty, forty five mark, that seems to be the average. We have gone and tested the water. So what we've done is look at our overheads and we've tried to reduce our costs as much as possible. We've tightened our bout as far as we possibly can, we're looking to increase our revenue lines, but essentially we're at the stage where we have to look at finding some relief that provides us with ongoing support going forward.
So the demands on your organisation are increasing, and?
Yeah, there's a huge increase in demand from the sporting sector, as I said, particularly in that sport development capability area. Providing management, governance, support to a lot of sports to keep them operating. Funding's getting tighter, so we're doing more work to assist sports to actually source funding, and that increases the demands on our resource and time.
And when, what would be the reasons for the funding being tighter for the sports organisations? Are we, just to get more people going after that same pool of funding?
There's a shrinking pool of funding for sport in New Zealand, and that's reflected in what's happening within Dunedin and in Otago. So there's a reduction in funding from a variety of sources, so incomes remain static for most sports, but costs have increased. And grants that they would normally have got two or three thousand, they're just not getting at the moment, so that's putting increased pressure on them.
Okay, and the thing that really touches me and see from the information you provide is there's a lot of soft activities that you're doing with the community, and with whether the elderly or whether the young, and some of the, just organising some of the walks. Green prescription comes to mind. Can you touch on the importance of that to the community and the funding mechanism to continue that?
Yeah, well, we're no longer in the business of sport, we're in the business of physical activity and encouraging people to have healthy lifestyles, so it's more of a holistic approach now. So our health programmes are integrated with encouraging people to be out and being more physically active, and that has implications in terms of improving general community wellbeing.
Perfect, and one final question is, in the end of your submission, it says council should take responsibility for the hockey turf at King's, can you just elaborate on that a little bit further?
Yes, well, my understanding is that the King's High School hockey turf will be speaking to council on Wednesday, so we'll be there to support them there. But through our involvement over the last year to fourteen months in working with parties to pull that project together, essentially it would provide a hub for South Dunedin, an investment into that community, provision of a facility, an all weather facility, that all the contributing schools in the South Dunedin catchment could make use of. So it's wider than just hockey and King's High School as the applicants.
Councillor Yew.
Thank you, Your Worship, Mr Brumbel, Mr Bruce, I have two questions. The first one is how much are the trends in the growth in sport driven by wins? As in Stars, you know, the Steven Adams of this world, America's Cup wins, those kinds of things. How does, how much does that affect your in the trends and growth in sport?
It's a difficult question. I guess the coverage of that sort of thing, you're always going to get people gravitating towards that sort of thing if they see success in those areas. One of the things that we're emphasising in terms of looking at these trends is actually talking and listening to our young people in particular, and finding out what they're interested in. And it may not be a traditional sport, you know, we're seeing a lot of young people actually join gyms and just doing their own sort of fitness and that sort of thing outside of this competitive, so we're an organised sport environment, whether it's skateboarding or whatever else it might be. The key for us has actually been able to actually talk to those young people and actually find out their views and where their trends are. You relate that back to what we talk about, the facilities, and obviously you can then start to match that stuff up.
Thank you, and, you know, we often hear Stars talk about how they were inspired by somebody in previous years. So that segue is really nice into my next question, which is around niche sports. Because I'm aware, I've just compiled a list actually recently for a particular purpose, of individuals from Dunedin who've been involved in the America's Cup programme at some point, and I was astonished at the numbers, and we often punch above our weight. We just had a cooling team of the young men won the world championship. How much, what's the breadth of your coverage in terms of those niche sports like cooling, fencing, that kind of thing?
Everything. We work with those sports, yeah. So we also have a forum for small sports, as well as dealing with the bigger, more traditional sports. And increasingly, it's those niche sports which are coming to the fore because that's where a lot of our youth are now gravitating. It's those more extreme sports, the ones that offer a bit more challenge, a little bit different, and also provide them with a bit of individualism, where they're not constrained by rules and regulations.
And an opportunity to excel on the world stage, thank you.
Councillor Arfisa.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you very much for your submission. Following up on councillor Wiley's question about the request for the offset grant, is that to be ongoing or is it a one off?
We'd like to think it can be ongoing.
And also, just in terms of your general approach in terms of working with youth and non-traditional sports, do you, do you have engagement with Manifinua and other Maori groups in terms of the Maori sports that have been played in the community?
We have a relationship with all the various iwi and roonanga across Dunedin and Otago. We work with them closely, and we've certainly got close working relationship with our health programmes, which are developing into that wider approach.
Councillor Elmer, another question.
Yes, I'm aware that you're actually now doing the accounting program at Sport Otago, and I was just wondering, what kind of free services do you offer all these sports clubs around Dunedin to support them?
I mean, our sport development team, our capability work is there to be utilised by sport, as John said. We cover all range of sports. We have to, I guess, be smart with our time and how we utilise it. So whilst a sport may approach us and we may not be able to work with them straight away, it just depends on the workload that we've got on at the moment, but we will take them on board and work with them. We very rarely have, we said, no, go away, we can't help you. It's just a case, and in a lot of cases us, we have to be quite reactive. We're not necessarily going out for looking for work in that space just because of the time and resource that we have available.
And if we can't help them directly, we can refer them on to an appropriate organisation that can work with them, whether it's Citizens Advice or, you know, Budget Advice or Community Law Centre, for example.
Okay, because a lot of clubs now, well, basically the requirements of boards etcetera in administration and support has gone up, and so what kind of training do you do for these?
So our last sports forum, we held six, five to six sports forums per year. The last one we held was on governance and management. Part of the D I A who came in and presented, we had about thirty four people there, probably about twenty sports represented to, you know, look at the basics of governance and management. And then, you know, if there's follow up from that, they can engage with our capability team and we can work with them more one on one if required.
Thank you, that's invaluable. The other question I had is in active transport, and what kind of work is being done in the biking space so we can encourage people to bike, not only recreationally but also?
So actually going back a number of years now, we used to have quite an extensive contract with D C C to deliver a number of active transport initiatives, that's been scaled back over the years. We now just deliver what's called Walk and Wear Week, first week of March, where we have about fifty odd schools partaking in the Walk and Wear program, which encourages biking and walking to school. And I'm also aware that the Transport Department at council are doing some stuff with bikes in schools at the moment, and we've got the track down at Caris Brook.
Which is wonderful.
And we're looking at, they're looking at other options about where more bike paths can be located in schools as well.
Thank you.
And initially we worked very closely with transportation planning in terms of promoting and designing cycleways. So we were quite active a couple of years ago in that space.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate your submission.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Now, while Teresa's coming up, can I just remind councillors that we are, we've already fallen behind on time. So can you please ensure that your questions are succinct? And if you don't ask the necessary ones, and no matter how interesting it is, please avoid getting into discussion. That's not what we're here for. And we need to not let our submitters down by keeping them waiting for long periods of time. So please, be economical with your questions. Welcome, Teresa. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I've circulated a summary of what I'm going to talk about. So I'm asking for an increase of funding to the Dunedin Shanghai Association, which I'm the chair of, of three and a half thousand dollars each year. We are currently funded for five thousand dollars a year, the same as the two other sister city associations. That's Edinburgh and, and Otago. Yeah, okay. And so, but I, I do believe that the relationship that the city has, that Dunedin City has with Shanghai, puts us on a different level. And by, by its nature, it means, it demands a lot more of us to, so our association's role is to support that sister city relationship. And it, and I suppose is to provide and then the, a representation from the population of the city, not just from the council, you know, itself, but population representing different sectors of the city to front up, to build these, the relationship with Shanghai. So now put in there, building relationship with Shanghai in a meaningful way. And I've been told time and again by my predecessors and people who've been going to Shanghai for many years that, that face-to-face contact is, is very crucial. So, so it's, it's something that, that I think is important for us to keep that. Now, when I stepped into the chair's position, I realised that the chair has been funding the trips to Shanghai basically himself for the last ten-plus years by paying half of that each time, plus putting in his, his own time in terms of the trip, obviously. So it was a bit of a surprise to me, I have to say. The main reason that I'm asking for sort of support, increase in funding, is to partly fund that, that half cost, half, half trip cost. And that, the trip each year, it's about three and a half thousand dollars plus GST. So half is already funded, so it's the other half. It's about eighteen fifty that we're asking for increase in funding. So I've given you my latest statement of financials, profit and loss. If you look at two thousand and seventeen, basically it is, you see that there are actually, two trips actually put into the one year. So, so normally we're trying to, I know the city goes probably, you know, a few times a year. What we're hoping to do is to have representation at least once a year to support the city and, and build that relationship face-to-face. So that's the first thing. And the second thing that I like to, we like support in terms of funding for is that part of our, our main function is to identify the common interests between, amongst the Dunedin players in this relationship and connect them. And, and I've, and through that, what we normally do is provide, we organise talks, what we call trading with China talks. And it's not just business talks, as actually I invite, we invite all the participants in different areas, whether it's university, education, schools, businesses, city itself, and polytech. The different players come to talk to us about their relationship with China and Shanghai. So, and we all learn from that. And I saw through that a real demand for more understanding of that Chinese culture, how we can use the, how we can understand more about the Chinese culture and do business with them. So for example, the talks that I organise about marketing to the Chinese, to the Chinese population on a general level, or businesses, or tourism businesses doing business with Chinese tourists, how to deal with Chinese tourists in a way that's culturally sensitive to them, or when you deal with, when you encounter problems with them, how best to deal with them. So, and a similar thing, when we have dealing with Chinese students who come to the city when we have problems with them, how do we deal with them? So what it made me realise is that there is a real opportunity for us. We have now got a resource within the city, which is the significant number of Chinese students who have graduated over the years and who are now, you know, working, graduating from the city and also working in the city. I think it's, it's a really important thing for us to harness that resource to support the tourism, the different businesses. So one of the things that I'm, I've been working on is working with the university careers advisory in terms of matching Chinese students with potential employers and also trying to develop Chinese students as a resource for the city. So for example, one of the projects I'm working on this year is, this is the two thousand and nineteen China-New Zealand Year of Tourism. And we are developing a Chinese social media competition for this year to promote Dunedin as a tourist destination. And I like to put up a price for that. And the whole point is to encourage businesses, tourism businesses, to use the Chinese students who are here to build those relationships. So where I'm going is with us is really, I, I see there's a real opportunity for that. So what I'm asking for, it's a little bit more funding in terms of supporting projects in that area for us to develop the resources. What I've also suggested is that, and I have talked to private sector, so what we, we're looking to do is leverage the funding we get from you with businesses. Like I've talked to BNZ in terms of providing sponsorship for that competition, as well as working with the university and the polytech in terms of their tourism department and their research services, resources. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you've done. And listening to the mayor coming back from China recently and saying how well the relationship is, is in part, thank you very much for everything you've done for that. But, and it was just coming on that last point of the leveraging. The, the accounts that we've been given, which I gather are on profit and loss, don't have the income that you're also receiving or already leveraging. So it's got the costs of the travel, but it doesn't have the, presumably the donation that came in for the travel. And would you mind us saying, having a better idea of what the accounts are? Not that we've been critical, but to understand the other contributions that you're already getting in? I mean, you've obviously got some interest that you're receiving as well.
Yeah.
So, so some investments.
So the main income we're getting is the five thousand dollars each year.
Yeah.
And then we've got the subscription income. There isn't at the moment any other income. So what I'm looking at for this year, as I've talked to BNZ, for example, with that competition, I've talked to them and they are on board with providing some sponsorship towards the funding that, sorry, towards the price we're going to give in exchange for their name going on to that.
Sorry, the, the travel?
Oh, the travel. The travel is basically what we, I personally put in. So it doesn't go through the accounts. It's really, I only claim the half, that, for half of the trip.
I, I suppose I was thinking that you'd be putting the whole thing through to show that clarity.
Oh, right.
And, and then that investment, because it'd be very interesting to compare all of the sister cities and seeing how that, how you are leveraging it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and Kiroti Teresa, thank you for your work and the work of your group. My question is really just around, so as to avoid us having to take sides in a civil war. So long as we granted your request for additional resourcing, you wouldn't be unsupportive of us doing the same for our relationship with Edinburgh, for example?
Well, I, I, you know, that's a matter obviously for, for the council. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'm looking at the relate, the extent and the scope of the relationship that the city has with Shanghai, which I think extends and covers a much wider, you know, range of areas now. But I'm not in the best position to judge. I think that certainly in terms of the work that I do, I do cover, you know, I work with the education sector, the tourism sector, the business sector, the arts and culture sector, as well as actually the sports sector. Very mindful of what John was doing before. So, so there is a, a very wide scope. My understanding of the other sister cities, associations are more, a lot more on, say, Otago is that relationship in terms of scholarships and continuing in the education area. But again, I'm probably not as educated and informed as you are. Edinburgh has got a wider coverage, I believe. But I think we are, you know, be fair to say you've got a China project coordinator on the council that's full-time. And that level of funding in terms of the, of Shanghai hasn't increased over the, over the years at all, you know, despite the level of activities going up.
Thank you, Ms. Chan, and thank you for the work you do. I just wanted to ask a question around the travel. And you and I have discussed perceptions of it. I just wondered if you could just summarise the benefits of being up there in China and how that's received? You've touched on it, but could you just summarise it?
I think the main thing is having someone who is independent, as I said, of the council itself, to turn up and say, "Well, we are from the population of the city that, that reflects the support of this relationship." And I think that was the reason why the association was formed in the first place, to say that, and, and it is, you know, I believe personally, it isn't reasonably good that we have a Chinese face. And I think from, from that, I mean, you'd be aware of the work that Malcolm Wong-Peter Chen has done over the years. And so it, it is that sort of continuation of that connection with the Chinese population here as well. So I think it's, it's building that relationships, that relationship with China. And I, there's no other way, I, you know, through my own legal work, I deal with people over the internet and email and a lot. But it seems to me that, that is the way to deal with China.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Ms. Chan. I, I noted that you want to partner with polytech and the university and businesses. Can you just speak briefly about your relationships, working relationships, if any, with Manu Fenua organisations?
It's a very good question. I have, we have worked with, you know, Edward Ellison, obviously, and Na'atahu, who had been going to, on some of the delegations. And we have actually invited for them to come and talk to us at one of the Trading with China talks in terms of what they're doing with China and Shanghai. And that was very informative. So what we hope to do and continue to do, like when we host the Shanghai Models during the ID Fashion Week, we invited them to come along as part of that business, as well as the local iwi connection with, with China and Shanghai. Because I know, understand they've got aspirations in that area and we like to build on those. So that is part of us connecting the common interests.
You're representing the Cavanish Community Group.
Good afternoon, Tony Cullen. It's, it's good to be here. I've got various submissions from various members of our community group. It may not be exactly what's in, in front of you. We're encouraged by councillor Marie LaFeysoe to front up here and make, make a stand on some things. So the first one is road safety. Cavisham residents are witnessing increased traffic volumes passing through our shopping centre. This adds extra risk to pedestrians as the use of footpaths and pedestrian crossings. Plus, there is extra pressure on vehicles coming out of side roads to fit into the stream of traffic. We simply ask for the continued monitoring of road safety and structural improvements wherever possible. The recently added painted roundabout at the intersection of David and Thorn Streets has greatly improved the filtering of traffic at that intersection. And we are concerned about the visibility and safety of our pedestrian crossing. Second one is housing. In our area, there are many rundown houses, damp, cold, and yet still occupied. Our proposal is that the DCC take it on a leadership or a facilitation role to rejuvenate this housing stock in Cavisham. The area of focus first would be between David and Burn Street, down by old Caris Brook, and Hillside and South Road. This area has not been impacted by flooding by and large. The concept would be to get the parties together, the homeowner, the tenant, a lending institution, not necessarily mainstream bank, but it could be NGO sort of organisation, a construction firm and the DCC, and work out a plan. Would this property be repaired or demolished and rebuilt? If tenanted, provide temporary accommodation for the tenant. The property owner is given access to low-cost loan and the project goes ahead. Once, once complete, the tenant returns and the property owner services the loan. Other conditions will be built into the plan to protect all parties, for example, you know, maybe not. Not, we'd sell the property immediately, but maybe for a ten-year period, something like that. Just a concept, and there's probably fish hooks there, but worth exploration. Food resiliency. The Cavisham Community Group would encourage the DCC to protect our fertile soils on the Tyree Plains for food growing for future-proof for the needs of our future generations. There is concern that more and more fertile land is being locked up in housing as housing development expands. In our own commitment to food resiliency, we have a plan to plant a hundred fruit, nut trees and berry bushes in public spaces in Cavisham area so our community can harvest the produce. Reserve some public spaces. The Cavisham Community Group would encourage the DCC to expand its commitment to establishing new public reserve areas plus enhancing existing reserves. Parts of Cavisham are identified as medium-density housing zones with proposed minimum two hundred square metre site. This hardly allows for a decent-sized backyard. Attractive, stimulating and peaceful destinations in the form of public reserves is a highly, high priority for our community. And lastly, LED lighting. The Cavisham Community Group would encourage the DCC to carefully research its options with the proposed street lighting change. Every consideration should be given to the effect of LED lighting on the environment, human health, protection of the night sky and improved safety. In particular, approve, the approval of shielded amber two, two thousand two hundred K LED lights, street lights to protect the velvet worm and other biodiversity. Studies have shown an adverse effect on sleeping patterns and written eye damage with LED lighting that is too bright. So that's from the Cavisham Community Group. Yes, yeah, sure.
Your Worship, I have a question for, maybe it's the CEO, if you indulge me. And not necessarily for this submission, but around a mechanism to note any specific operational matters that come through the submissions. Do we have a mechanism to deal with those and pick those up?
If you want to make any notes and then email them through, then that would probably be the simplest because then they're in a formal record. So if you email those through to Sharon Bodeker, then she'll keep a list and we'll bring them back for answers if we can within this series of meetings, if that's when they're needed.
Thank you.
Equally on that point, at, Your Worship or maybe it's deputy mayor, will we be having a chance to ask for reports for the deliberations at the end of all of the submissions?
Yeah, we will certainly have an opportunity to ask.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one, thank you, Kiroti. And around the housing, the discussion around housing redevelopment, large-scale housing redevelopment. Do you have a sense of roughly what percentage of residents in those areas are tenants as opposed to homeowners?
Should answer, no, no. But I guess my gut feeling would be it'd be tenanted, yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you, Tony. Do we have a copy of that? Oh, okay.
I brought in two extra copies, so you're most welcome.
Mr Cullen, thank you for your submission.
I want it to be brief.
I just wanted to put a USB in if I could please. Am I good to go? Or do we wait till the end of the day? Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Norcom Barker, I'm from Larnet Castle. We support an increased budget for tourism. We also support the 19 execution points from the Enterprise Denieden Review. We have to ask the question, why tourism? And it's not just about tourism, it's about what it can do for the city, especially enhancing wildlife and supporting heritage restoration. However, we currently think we're heading in the wrong direction. And three points, we think this city is marketed as a cheap city, we think that tourism should be outside the council, and we think we need a tourism plan. And I would like to clear up a point. In my last submission, I said that domestic tourism was 12% over the past four years. The DCC replied it was 137% over that four years. I've heard no correction of this. I contacted central government because these are MBIE figures, I presume they're not my figures. They said that the 12% was completely correct, and they did not know where the 137% came from. Can I please have confirmation that the councillors are aware that 12% is a correct amount, because it's very relevant to funding?
The numbers were correct, following the meeting, and I've seen emails that you were included in, so I'll follow you up as to why you haven't seen them.
I appreciate it, because I never receive the emails. Thank you. If we think the situation is improving, our figures for domestic tourism in the last three months, April was negative 7.5%, March was negative 24.5%, and February is 28.8%. We need economic growth. Sorry, my domestic. We do need economic growth. Our wages are going up with the living wage coming in. Our insurance has gone through the roof. Our cost of renovation is always going up with compliance costs. This is a, I'll just put this in there for interest sake, this is our gift shop restoration at the moment, and it costs a lot of money. And you also be aware that rates are going up. This is a graph I showed last year as well, this is domestic tourism index, and the dotted red figure is the New Zealand national average, and the blue figure is Dunedin. And in this, I think too, imagine if we didn't have the great work that DV Mail is doing propping this up, imagine what it'd be like then and how bad it would be. And we should be celebrating projects like the castle, not removing them from DCC material and having only the council-owned entities showing there. And Your Worship, you made the comment last time that who should pay for all of this? And I thought long and hard about this, and the answer when it comes seems quite obvious, the tourists should pay. I would not mind having less tourists who contribute more, who stay longer and have a better experience. And for an example, at the last Dunedin Host meeting, a student from Otago University put up these figures from two social media sites from China. So China's a bit different, they take a lot of photos and put very little words, and apologies if it's blurred, but this is the percentage of photographs that are included in their two main social media sites. The most photographed is the railway station at 18%. The next one is Larnet Castle at 11%. Then it's churches, the University of Otago, Bourbon Street, and so on. And the question I put is how many of these are free? And Larnet Castle aside, they're pretty much all free. The question was then asked, why were there so few photos of food or dinners? And the answer to that from the student was because a lot of people just drive in, take the photographs to the free sites and then drive out. And I asked, how's that good for Dunedin? And if we extrapolate that out 10 years, where are we going to be? One of the main points of Dunedin's tourism plan is to stay another day. Also, just taking a photograph is not a great experience. We should be promoting experience where they get depth, history or wildlife explained to them and shown to them, and that's a win-win. And they're willing to contribute for that, and the castle is a shining example of that. The Enterprise Dunedin Review, one thing that Enterprise Dunedin Review fails to mention is a major conflict of interest of having tourism inside a council that owns a majority of tourism stock in the city. It's not a level playing field in the account, and the review fails to even mention this. The review is not consistent with the comments throughout it and the final recommendation. It has highlighted a lot of issues but been recommended no change. To get change, we have to have change. I was glad to see that the review stated that the tourism staff are highly regarded by the tourism industry and they are seen as doing an extremely good job in very difficult circumstances, and that they are very under-resourced. Hence, why we are here today to ask this for remedy. I'm aware there's a marketing person to be hired, but the job description states that the tourism knowledge is preferable, but is not required. So it does not address the review's concerns about the lack of tourism resources in our regional tourism organisation. And we need change, and it should include a tourism plan, leadership, governance, and also working together. And we are not currently, my understanding, that in-kind from industry has fallen from about 600,000 to about 130,000. The industry has lost faith in the RCO and empathy has taken hold. I agree that keeping tourism in council may be the cheapest option, but is at the best value. Our current direction is costing us millions in lost income for the city, and is costing us in infrastructure. So I ask that, at the very least, can we increase our budget for tourism in the annual plan? And I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr Barker. And just a question, I mean, your points have been clearly made. So I wonder if the delivery model that currently exists is as fundamentally broken as you suggest, what the merits of throwing more money at what you see as a broken model are?
Because my understanding, this is the annual plan, and this is the only thing that's up for discussion.
Do you think, so you think that would be a wise investment?
Well, if you go back to how we're doing, if we don't put some money in it, what happens to the city, we lose millions.
Kiora, thank you. I'm just slightly confused by a portion, and I may be overthinking it, so apologies if I am. You said your domestic market is down, but is your overall market down for your business? I mean, or is it just people, domestic people can't get in, but international tourists can? They're both different questions.
Domestic's about 70% of our income, and the other 30% is international. And that's, what's propping us up at the moment is the rise in cruise ships. But cruise ships don't use accommodation, they are low yield per person, so that's propping us up. We took the cruise ships out of it mainly, and we are doing well in international, but that has signs, real journeys, Otaaru are pulling back on their estimates in the future. So there is going to be a softening in the international market. So if we don't invest in tourism, we're not getting returns.
No, I appreciate that. What I don't understand from you, yet, from your submission is, do you still have more capacity? Or is it just that the markets are changing and you're considering that there is going to be a change, that we need to be more reliant on the domestic market?
No apologies, we do have more capacity. Middle of February, probably not, because you've got a lot going on in the city, but outside that, yes, we could do with more tourists. And the other thing too is, as I've said, you may see a lot of tourists, but if they're just driving and photographing and driving out, the hoteliers are down lately, you'll see the figures for occupancy is down, and they're hurting. So what we want to have is a specific marketing plan that drives people to spend and contribute to Dunedin.
And again, sorry, the markets change, we've already had a council meeting spotting where Airbnb's were talked up as something that has skewed the rental market. Again, is that something that's translating right through all of the tourism businesses or just some tourism businesses? So restaurants noticing an increase or a decrease in tourists eating?
I, I, no, I don't know, sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Norcom. Just a couple of questions. I see that Australia is still our biggest destination, visitor. And I was just wondering about our marketing budget. What would your comment be about our marketing or advertising budget?
In what context, sorry?
So advertising for people to come here, like in New Zealand Magazine or on TV or whatever?
The way we see it, at our business, for example, it's the best value for dollar in dollar out, so you advertise the markets where you're going to get the best return. And Australia is a market where they can fly here directly, so it is a good market to advertise into, and it is our bread and butter. There's emerging markets and markets that are disappearing all the time, but Australia is the one that provides us the best value.
The other thing is, you mentioned people staying, even one night will increase the offering. And I was just wondering whether there are other offerings that Dunedin could develop that would mean that we could retain people for, say, one or two nights? Have you got a comment on that?
Yeah, I think Dunedin is actually well served. We have very authentic products, they're not, excuse me for my expression, but a Disneyland product that's artificial, man-made. And there are other operators coming on board, so we have the capacity at the moment to engage the people with good experiences for a couple of days. One of the comments we get a lot of feedback on is, I wish you would know what was available in the city, and that's we were falling down a bit.
So we're not telling the story, is that what you're saying?
No, we're not telling the story, no.
Councillor Lawrie.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Barker. Look, I am just interested in, well, like, I was here last year, obviously, and I heard the discrepancy in the figures, and the councillor that alleged those figures then said, look, maybe it was worth having a briefing, which we had, and those figures were presented at that, were 12%. So I tried to follow that up, and was never satisfactorily explained to me either, so you're not alone there. But on the basis you've said evaluate the 19 recommendations of the Martin Jenkins Report and allocate budget to ensure they're all carried out urgently, are you happy with the proposal that we have done so far, which is to, well, we're in the process, as far as I know, still in the process of employing a new manager to look after tourism as opposed to taking it outside? Are you confident that if we follow those 19 recommendations, we will be in a much better space?
One clarification is the job description I saw was saying it was a marketing job, it's not a tourism job, that's my understanding of it, because it says that the job preferably has a tourism knowledge, but only preferably so. I gather it's a marketing job that has an element of tourism in it, rather than being a tourism job? Am I correct in that?
I'll just, I'll just declare, I may have quoted that wrong, so I'll leave that to the...
I don't have the job description with me. I know, what I do know is that the job description was developed by the HR team in John in consultation with a small group of people, including Dunedin Host, I think Sophie Barker, Chamber of Commus, so there was a small group of people that were asked to give input. I'm sorry, I don't have the details of the job description here, but it is about marketing the city as a destination. So, you know, you're all aware that part of the, when there had been many complaints about tourism Dunedin being outside of council and what the losses were for the potential lining up of marketing around both coming to live, to work, to play, to invest and so on, and the decision was made to bring tourism Dunedin in-house and combine it with the Economic Development Team. All of that work was designed to look at marketing for people coming to live here, people bringing their students here, people coming to study here, people coming to invest here and try and capitalise on that. That will be reflected in some way in the job description, I don't know what that is.
That's, that's the job description there in the line I was talking about, an in-depth knowledge of the industry would be advantageous. So it's saying, it would be advantageous, but it's not a core role, so I hope that answers the question that it's a marketing role, not a tourism role? Thank you. Any further questions?
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you. Norcom, can you just walk me through the numbers you quoted of 600,000 in-kind contribution that the operators were working with Tourism Dunedin back in 2012, and 137,000 contribution last year?
So in-kind is basically what industry partners like Larnet Castle give in for mills or in partnership agreements to go out and do campaigns. And others, like the Hospitality Association, will do the same, they'll contribute so we go out and get campaigns, especially in the off-season or shoulder season to get basically the tills ringing. And that was, and don't quote, I can't quote it, but it was something like, there's 1.2 million budget, there was 600,000 given to, by the industry, and my understanding is that's fallen to about 137 because the lack of the relationships and the breakdown there. I would imagine Larnet Castle will be one of the main contributors to that, we still look at them. Issue's been is that the value of them has dropped. A lot of them are, have gone from tourism related things to city branding, as we've talked, and that's not great value for tourism entities. We want things that will bring people into town and drive it. So this, people still, especially private businesses, want value out of their contribution.
Okay. You also talked about the per annum numbers for domestic tourism of 5.7 per annum in Dunedin versus 8.2% per annum nationally. Can you expand on that a little bit more?
As I said, 70% of the market is domestic tourism, so it is a large part of our market, and it has been falling. And part of that reason for that is because of the lack of campaigns we are doing, and we desperately need to have more tourism industry working together to get those campaigns going to keep people, especially in the off-season, because we are, tourism is a very seasonal business.
And moving into that, in your submission, you talked about a winter festival or something like that. What do you see happening in that space?
There is, I gather the OTTs leading a winter festival that replaced Cabres, so that's worked. And to clear another thing, I'm Chair of the Wild Dunedin Festival, because that was suspiciously made to, because it's such an appropriate fit for Dunedin, and it is a shoulder season. So we need more things that'll bring people in the city and also get people in Dunedin out and celebrate what we do have.
So the vibe I'm getting is that at one point, you're very frustrated with the progress that's been made, but at the other side, you're still, as a castle and a company and also in your own time, investing everything you can to sort of grow things like the Wild Dunedin Festival and maintain Dunedin's profile on the map.
It's a good point, because we are one of the main contributors in kind, and as Dr Bidros said, there is being work done. And I should make the point that the Chair of Dunedin Host is Paul Phelan, who is the General Manager of Larnet Castle, so we are paying him to work positively going forward. But I'm not to sit on the sidelines criticizing here, we are still trying very hard to make this work.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Barker. I had a question about capacity. I just wanted to understand, in the height of the season, do you still have capacity at that time? Or is it mostly in the off-season that you were talking about?
Sometimes, it's not even, when you talk capacity, cruise ships, the way the market's gone, there's used to be a lot of buses coming into Dunedin, they've gone and the cruise ships have replaced them, and the buses came first thing and last thing, cruise ships come in the middle of the day, which clashes with FITs, and this is only tourists, not accommodation. And what we do is something called dynamic pricing, so we lower our prices in the shoulder of the day, so the tourists come earlier and later, the FITs and the cruise ships come. So we average out the day, so we still have capacity through almost all days. Middle of February does get busy, because we've got orientation masters games and everything happens at once, so we're trying to spread it out a bit. So we're trying to spread it out a bit. But we still have capacity and we still have capacity in our accommodation too.
So you still have capacity in the, on the busy days, that's what I was trying to understand?
Not at the peak times, don't come during-
No, no, no.
But outside that, yes, we do.
Yeah. And in terms of the shoulder season, because the shoulder season's got longer, how many workers have you, because of course with the seasonal nature of hospitality and the tourism industry at its time, how many of your employees have you been able to continue through that off-peak season, given we've got the shoulders now extended?
It's variable. Because we carry up to about 100 staff in the middle of the season. And because of the four weeks holiday, a lot of people work, we have 30 staff on a Christmas Day and across New Year. So we have a lot of accumulated leave that we have to get rid of. So a lot of staff stay to cover that. We have a skill shortage, like everyone, and things like chefs. So we carry the chefs across winter, even though they don't have much to do, bless them. So we now carry staff a lot longer than we used to. So the off-season is still incredibly busy. And as I showed, we are doing a lot of work in the off-season and we're actually expanding the castle with a gift shop downstairs, so our capacity of people does expand.
So you said the off-season's incredibly busy, did I hear that right?
Our off-season's busy in what we are doing, so we need staff to do that. It's not, we spend money half the year, we earn it half the month usually.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Elder.
Thank you. Norcom, I just picked up on your point about Wild Dunedin. And one of the things I'm really interested, because I'm a walker, is the development of tracks and trails. And I see the Peninsula and Harbour cycleway as bringing a whole new, once that's finished, that'll be amazing and bring a whole lot of people. And I was just wondering whether in fact the outdoor adventure space needs further development? For example, we have some of the top surfing city in New Zealand, basically.
I agree entirely with you. I'll just say, Paul Pope should be the one speaking, but it's not me. I agree entirely that it's authentic products, it is natural to the area, there is a huge amount of potential there. I mean, the peninsula is beautiful, but I would make the point to it that we don't want tourists who are going to be cheap there. We don't want them going down to Sanfley Bay and walking through the wildlife. We'd rather have people who come and experience it and are guided and have interpretation and that sort of thing. The last thing, even though I'm in the tourism trade, the last thing I want to see Dunedin is overrun by cheap tourists. But I do, I agree with you, we have an amazing potential around the peninsula especially. And Paul can probably speak a bit more to it than I can.
Commissioner Wilson.
Sorry, just another question. And I want to ask this of you and of the CEO if I can. It's at the end of the day, apart from structural changes, this isn't appropriate for, you support the more funding, do you support even more funding than that suggested in the annual plan? For, and where we sit compared to other cities in New Zealand for this? And that's the second question is really for how we compare to other cities.
Two points with it is, I take the point from Dr Bidrose that we have gone away from tourism funding to city branding.
Yep.
So it's very hard, and I imagine it's hard to say, here's tourism funding, here's city branding funding. The second point, I don't think it's about how much money we put in, it's the value we get out of the money.
Mm-hmm.
And in that way, it should be, rather than saying, come and take photographs at Rowway Station in Baldwin Street and visit Toy Two, that's free, those sort of things. It should be about engaging them so they contribute to heritage and wildlife. And that's the message we sell. And we all work together, because if we all work together, it's better value for the city. So, you know, to Commissioner Hawkins' point, we should be getting better value as well out of our funding. So it's not the amount, it's the value.
Okay. And so the second, can I just understand whether we sit as compared to the other?
I read Mr Barker's submission, and he referred to the Martin Jenkins report, which pointed out that Dunedin City Council funding for marketing the city roughly, tourism sits roughly at about the national average. He is, Martin Jenkins are right, but what I think they should have said was that this is compared with everywhere else in New Zealand, there's 78 councils and a lot of them don't care particularly about tourism, they're not tourism destinations. And when you line up the tourism destinations, we are at the lower end of the funding. There is no doubt that Mr Barker's absolutely right about that. When I, when we had our austerity years, at the beginning of that, we had about $500,000 for marketing. It was untagged to anything and the person, the staff manager responsible was free to spend it on whatever they wanted. And there was some benefits in that for the sector in that she could just chump up and help fund things. And part of the austerity days, when everybody had their budgets cut, that was cut severely and was tagged to specific things. So it was no longer available to assist partners in the sector. And the same thing happened right across council departments. It's not even back to the level that it was at the beginning of that austerity at this point. So I think Mr Barker does have a point, money is tight. And we are, we are still being fairly prudent with the ratepayer spend.
That would equally be true about a lot of things, that we haven't got back to service levels yet.
Mr Barker, thank you very much for your submission, appreciate it. Thank you. Ms Angelo. Welcome.
Okay.
Now, I note that you're here for two submissions. So in the first instance, you're going to speak for City Rise Up.
Yes.
And then we'll do that separately and then we'll move on to the-
Well, actually, I'm going to keep it very brief, because I went over time last time, and I'm only going to do City Rise Up and one aspect of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I think it's better that people ask questions.
Sure.
First of all, the feedback asks for two questions, and one of them was about the free bus loop. I presume you've all got that, my submission on that. I won't read the first part, but I'm actually just going to go to the main thing. I move that the free bus loop provide for both residents and visitors, with a loop through and above the city, which takes residents closer to work, shops and play, with tourists able to view the city and harbour from above, discover its history through heritage zones and across the green town belt. I do feel that there's an emphasis really on just downtown and tourist spots. I think we need to look at where people are living in Dunedin. And there are lots of rumblings, there's a lot of money going on the tourist industry and not on the locals. I think by extending the bus loop, it caters for both. Cannongate, for instance, lost their bus in the new bus service, they don't have any bus service at all. And what I've discovered is that we have a huge population. Because we don't have a community board, we don't really have a voice. And if you, have you all got a copy of this? Right. I discovered from statistics given to me from the council, if you look at the bottom line, the total population of community boards is about 30% of Dunedin's population. If you look at the, I mean, one community board is 654 people. But if you look at the area outside the community board, 84,687 live in this central city, but we don't have a community board, there is no one speaking for them, but they live there. They're paying rates and they don't have an adequate means of getting to the nearest shops, to the nearest amenities. And I just think there needs to be a little bit more emphasis on the residents, this is what I'm hearing. So if you think that 70% of Dunedin's population, and possibly more now, are living on the hills, if you like, or around central Dunedin. I've got another map here, which actually shows PO Box 9016, which is central Dunedin. And it really goes just, the green belt is the defining line for City Rise. But a lot of people live in that area below the green belts of the city, and it's quite a climb. And quite frankly, they have no shops, they have no facilities. I live in Arthur Street, the nearest shop is where the bus hub is, Countdown. There is no bus stop between the bus hub and Arthur Street. And yet you've got thousands of people living on that hill. So I think it would be really wonderful to get tourists actually walk up those hills. I saw one this morning just walking along past my house with a backpack, a camera, and okay, I've just heard the previous submitter, he may not be contributing anything financially, but who knows, he may be. He was walking along with a camera, he was looking up at the Arthur Street Reserve, which is the first cemetery, he was looking at Atago Boys. And we know that on this hill, we have got so many heritage buildings, domestic buildings and grand buildings. I'm suggesting that instead of the loop ending in the city, it goes up from Spates up to the Catholic Zone. Actually, start at the Chinese Gardens, it goes from Chinese Gardens, it drops people at the warehouse for the warehouse zone, goes up to the Catholic Zone, the Priory, Kavanagh College, St Joseph's, the Cathedral, Atago Girls, Arthur Street Reserve, the first cemetery. You're up 80 metres above the city and you've got this wonderful view. People walk up just to see what the city looks like and what the harbour looks like. Because I live there, I see them. Then go along, it takes them up to the green belt. And we know that the green belt is a terrific asset for this city, it really is. It's why a lot of people come to live here. There are very few cities in the world where you've got this green forest, if you like, right in the centre of a city. And I think it attracts a lot of residents, but they won't stay if they cannot access shops and facilities. From Arthur Street, go along to where you've got walks in the town belt, you've got the observatories, you've got the staff going to schools, you've got the pupils going to schools. I'd like to see pupils taking buses to schools or walking. They don't need parents dropping them off, they just don't. They could perhaps be dropped off at the hub or in another area and then catch the bus up the hill, but they don't need to be, or link with the hub. If they live in the outskirts, they can link with the hub and then go up the hill. But to have a circular bus that's going around, not just on the flat, but up to City Rise would be an asset. The other thing is Moana Pool, it's really one of the biggest assets. It's like the library in Dunedin. The library and Moana Pool are huge assets for the residents. And to have a bus that actually takes people on that circular trip around, and you can just hop on and off and link with existing buses, which mainly go up Stuart Street, High Street. But the people are living between those two, and there's huge gullies between them as well. From Moana Pool, it can go through the bush to Royal Terrace, to Olverston, to Town Belt, and then return down to Albany Street and the university. So I really see this could be a wonderful route that would appeal not just to tourists, but will bring people up the hill to their schools and their work and down to the amenities and shops in downtown Dunedin. I think I'll end there, because I've, I could go on and on, but I will just end with a new report that's just come out, which is called Turning the Tide, and it's from cars to active transport. And I really think Dunedin has got to look this way, they've got to deal with cars coming into the city. And I think there is someone coming to talk about the cars to active transport. And I think we've really got to get people walking, particularly children. I mean, as you get older, I mean, I'm in my mid-70s, I won't be able to walk up that hill forever, but children can. And I see them being dropped off all the time, and the staff do the same thing. And I think it's time we actually said, look, let's park the cars. You've got to make it cheap, though. If it's more expensive to take a bus, they won't, they'll take the car. So let's look at some public transport and get people walking.
Thank you. And now, have you, you've just covered your first-
Yeah, I won't, I won't talk about anything else, I'll just take questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question, and I take it from what you were saying before, that you favour a model where people can just flag a bus down as opposed to having designated stops?
I like that idea, it works in other cities, yeah.
Do you, have you given some thought to, I'm just trying to map it out in my head unsuccessfully, but have you given some thought to how long this route would take? Obviously impossible to know, because it will depend on how many people are flagging it down. But do you, what do you envisage a circuit like this taking, time-wise?
I think you'd need two. I think you'd need two buses just going around, not just one. And I've actually put in my submission that you can apply for an electric vehicle, and I think this is something that could be happening. You can apply for funds for an electric vehicle or vehicles and have two going around.
It's not the same question, but it speaks to frequency, is really the question.
I don't know the frequency. I think you'd have to say, well, school times would be busy. Kids might come in from outside Dunedin and that's a busy time, because they want to go up the hill to the, I think we've got, oh, something like five or six educational institutions in City Rise, preschool right through to high school.
Sorry, if I can ask the same question a more productive way perhaps? How frequent would it need to be, do you think, for it to be successful?
I can't answer that question. I just see the concept at this stage.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Your Worship. Greetings. Further to that line of questioning, you'll appreciate that this consideration, which is pretty strongly supported, as you will have noticed from the media and so on, sits in the context of a bus system that is run by other than the DCC. And one of the comments, it's already been made in that respect, is that it's important that whatever we're advocating doesn't conflict in any way with the services that the OIC provides, which can be rerouted and modified through the normal process. Do you understand a concern that if we were to spread beyond the core area into areas that involved, as you've said several times in writing and just repeated, busy school times, transporting people at peak times, that we immediately walk into that conflict that would create problems with the regional council?
Well, the planned route, as I see it, which was going, what, from the museum to museum, it was going from one end of town to the other on the flat, there's bus services going there anyway. Yes, so, I mean, this is just, you're just doing the same thing at a higher level, at 80 metres. And it would link in, the main thing is that it does link in with the bus routes. For instance, if you were coming up from Kaikura Valley, you might just want to hop off at Moana Pool and continue down to the university, because, or if you're in Arthur Street, there's no, there used to be a bus from Bell Nose that went to the university, it doesn't now, it goes to the hub and you've got to change. So you could actually take the link that would take you through to the university and the polytech. And I mean, there's huge numbers that live in Bell Nose area that actually work at the polytech and the university. So they could just link in along the route, they could just take the transport. I'd call it local transport or city central transport, because it is part of the central city, it's just at a higher level than George Street.
Commissioner Elder.
Thank you, thank you, Liz, for presenting. I just note that you said 70% of the population of Dunedin does not have forum-like community boards. And I was just wondering what you thought might be a way of, you know, creating more voice for people.
I'm not looking for more bureaucracy so much as people don't know who to go to, they just don't know who to contact. In a community board, you've got representatives that you can actually, you can go along to the meetings, and it's about your local living area. We don't have that. We don't even have a meeting place in Arthur Street, there's no way, there's no community hall, there's no meeting place. Actually, to have two representatives that we know we could go to, two councillors that City Rise people, the 84,000 people could go to, would be a great help. We just don't know. I come to public forums like this, but individuals don't know who to go to.
So a question, just allocating, say, a couple of councillors to different areas or something like that?
That would be, that would be really good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms Angelo, thank you very much for your submission and your support. Mr Hannon. Oh, can I?
Yep.
I think it's all councillor in your plan submission. Cool. I'll put it standing if that's all right. So my name's Dave Hannon and I'm here to talk about rubbish landfills. So this is the Green Island landfill and it is probably Dunedin's most valuable piece of real estate. It has about 1.3 million cubic metres of airspace left and its today's value is worth about $300 million. It's got an estimated time of being filled between ten and thirteen years. However, it does rely on replacing this sewer along here. Now, this sewer is a single class X pipe. It will not take the weight of a landfill on top of it. It really needs to be upgraded. So it's a twin wall, twin, a twin culvert. Small section has been replaced between here and here to enable the bunks to be completed into the hillside. The value of extra space gained is worth $117 million. The cost of the upgrade is about $3 million. And I'm encouraging you to do it because that to me has a very strong cost benefit ratio. Maybe this thing can. So the other thing too is I know that the consent of the landfill runs out at 2023. And it's really, really, really important that the city makes every effort to try and secure operating any existing site. Because if you don't, you're effectively going to be kissing $300 million goodbye. And that is a full-size bar stadium in anybody's language. So there was already a consent landfill in the site just across the stream at the Burnside landfill. And it has $2 billion, $2 billion cubic metres of airspace left. I'm not sure where that landfill sits in the landfill strategy, but surely something the conversation needs to be had with them as well for the long-term strategy for Dunedin's waste. I went through some numbers, just to look at some numbers. So if we don't fill in the sewer, we've got about 900,000 cubic metres of airspace left. If we do fill in the sewer, which we can't read, is 1.5 million cubic metres of airspace. So in between 2008 and 2016, there was a seventy, roughly, volume change, roughly about 70,000 cubic metres per year. 2017, Delta lost the green on landfill contracts, even though it was, even though Delta's book was cheaper than waste management. But that, I think, was on hindsight a reasonably fair call because Waste Management brought in a $6 million worth of annual revenue, which is a lot of money, something that cannot be overlooked. But what I don't like about that contract is that it's a pay, you get paid, where you're incentivised to put more waste into the landfill. So the more waste that goes in, the more you get paid. And it doesn't cost you any more to operate a 150,000 tonne landfill as it does to operate a 50,000 tonne landfill. The contract should be a hundred some price, but it is not. So let's talk about fees because this is really where it comes down to a little bit. So nearly 2000s, the landfill was thought of as being a service provider to the ratepayers of the city. In other words, the waste prices are quite low. I remember and I'm sure you guys can all remember too, that waste prices used to be about $30, $35 a tonne. Waste went up massively through the idea that it requires to create behaviour change, you had to increase fees. So you create an economic incentive to achieve environmental outcome. So fees went up massively. And last year, last year, there was a 25% waste increase. Now, this didn't need to happen because there was a doubling of the revenue stream from Waste Management, a doubling of the revenue stream. So it was argued that this was a result of carbon chargers. Well, carbon only went from $10 to $25, which is roughly what it is now. Now, because of this incentive scheme, we take waste from Waitaki. Now, Waitaki District Council don't actually have a curbside recycling scheme in place. Don't actually have it. So we are taking a waste from a council that has got no waste minimisation in place. And I think that's because the Waste Council is incentivised to do this. And there's no, no, I guess, I guess the only reason they will do that is because if you didn't get a resource consent extension, you managed to fill the thing up. But in my view, that should be encouraged without hesitation. Waste bins also went up from, well, the true cost of a waste bin should only be that. My waste bin price went up from $189 to $289. Effectively a $100 of fee increase. And this was argued because of waste prices going up from the city. Who's the city contractor? Waste Management. So I think it's really important that this council really gain control of the waste market. At the moment, we have three, this is appealing to the Green Party side of this table here. At the moment, we have three rubbish trucks driving around the streets of Dunedin, picking up rubbish from different households. We've got the city councils and rubbish sector, we've got Waste Management, Environment Waste, we've got other sectors as well. It just seems ridiculous. Our environmental footprint to do that is just outrageous. We could have lower waste costs. We could go from $189 because there's a council-controlled waste bin system to $150. So we'd have the same service for cheap. We could have a range of services. We could set up small bins for people that don't put out much waste. And we could put larger bins out for fans that produce a lot of waste. And we could gain control of the waste stream rather than giving away to the private sector. One thing that really disturbs me though, and there's been some new documentary, there's been a new documentary put out just the other week on waste bins about the live recycling. And one of them is this idea that recycling is a really good thing. Now, glass is the one that really perturbs me a lot, I'm sorry to say. Glass is the worst commodity to recycle. Has anybody ever seen an analysis of the costs and benefits of recycling glass? Here we have 3,000 tonnes of waste collected of glass recycling. It has a revenue of $30 per tonne. Needs to say it's an easy mass, it's worth $100,000. Well, it's not quite $90,000, let's call it $100. What does it cost to collect that? Well, we've got four trucks running around the city of Dunedin. We've got the cost of labour, carbon footprint, et cetera. The cost is near on $500,000. It's a lot of $400,000 for what is effectively picking up sand. And I believe that this council or many other councils who do recycle recycling are actually doing something that the industry should be resolving themselves through producer responsibility, take-back schemes, that kind of stuff. We should not have to fund the $400,000 loss as ratepayers. You know, the other thing too that's also very upsetting, I guess, is the collecting of plastics from three to sevens. Three to sevens, they're rubbish, complete rubbish. We just export this stuff overseas to countries that are poorly equipped to deal with it, that have poor recycling systems in place, that impact on the health of the people that deal with these things, the costs that you get there. And here, here is an article which I would like you to just drop down and perhaps take a note of. Go and watch this because we are like these guys. There's a documentary exposing Australia, we can transpose that to Dunedin's recycling life. Collecting ones to sevens is just not, should just not happen. It should effectively be rubbish. I've also read a council strategy paper the other day, which says, I'm sure that it comes from our waste brothers, from waste people, from Waste Management, said, "Don't worry, we'll build you a new landfill. You don't, councillors don't have to worry about this because we've got the money, we can do this. We can build you a new landfill." So councillors, councillors throughout the country have said, "Oh, yeah, that seems a lot better there. You don't have to fund $300, $400 million." Well, don't do it because everywhere where that's happened, waste prices effectively doubled. We will go from $180 a tonne to perhaps $200 to $300 a tonne. And Waste Management, which currently, well, this, these are the numbers. Revenue stream for the city is worth $16 million from the landfill. And it costs roughly this for, to run the actual landfill. There's a profit there of $13 million. It costs $30 million to build a new landfill, perhaps 40 at the outside, spread over a few years. But you can see, anybody can see, that that has a very, very rapid payback. Three to five years, you've got a landfill payment. So I would like to see the following, and this is my part of the end of my submission here. The council will renegotiate their contract with Waste Management so it becomes a lump sum per month contract, not an incentive scheme for them to maximise their profit returns. Councils should recapture the waste stream that they've lost to Waste Management and others through their own, through their own council-funded waste bin service. And this should be funded through rates. And this, my dear Green Party friends, would resolve into a better, more effective, more environmentally friendly service at a lower cost to the ratepayer. So that appeals to the right side of the table too. A review of the cost of the screening of recycling should be presented to council with revenues. So council can actually see exactly, exactly what recycling costs. Because I would suggest that if you look at the recycling of glass and other commodities, you would probably say, no, this is not something we should be considering or funding. And the council, and unfortunately you've left this very, very late because 10 years ago I was advocating for school facilities to be instigated. 10 years ago, if we'd actually got our act together, or city got their act together, they could have actually secured a site for the next landfill and perhaps not exercised that consent, but had it in their back pocket. And now we're leaving all to the last minute to actually secure a new site for the landfill. There's a bit of a pad on. So can council investigate through the law and secure a consent? But in the meantime, you get a consent for the current site and you get a consent for the next 15 to 20 years. And then you exercise maximum waste minimisation incentives to try and preserve the life of the landfill. That's for you.
That's it? Good. Questions? Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. And thank you, Mr Hannon, for bringing your considerable experience to bear on this process. There's a lot in there. And it's just a question for you, Your Worship, around a process in terms of, it's likely that people will have questions of probably staff around some of the things that have been raised. But that this wouldn't be the most productive time to do that, but.
Well, not the most reliable time either.
But through, but through the deliberations process, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this in more detail with staff.
So I think what the question should be to, to Mr Hannon with regard to what he's advocating. And then if any questions arise from that of staff, we can give staff time before deliberations to come back to us with clarifying information.
Thank you.
councillor Bennett.
Thank you very much for coming to us with this incredibly detailed and quite new perspective on our landfill. I've been sitting here for over a decade now, hearing from various staff about how 2023 was an absolute end and it was not negotiable and apparently now it is. I've been listening to staff tell us about the success of our glass recycling system and wondered why it was that for many years, at enormous expense, our glass was being recycled, but ended up being used as road fill. And now I believe it's been sent to Auckland. Is it true that we send very heavy glass, once it's sorted, all the way to Auckland to get recycled?
Ah, yes.
Right. Is it possible for you to forward your presentation, not the verbal part obviously, but what you've got on the slides there? Is it possible for you to forward that to at least my email and perhaps if other councillors are interested as well, to their email so that we can actually have a bit more time to absorb what has been a lot of new information for me?
Oh, absolutely. I'll pass to the.
If you pass on to staff, local and research. councillor Wiley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Hannon. Something that I took from your presentation is your calling on the urgency to work on the $3 million for the double insulation of the new sewer.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so the sewer is a very important, there's a single line. It's actually a very important upgrade to do because from an infrastructure resilience point of view as well. So at the moment, you have a single line of a class X concrete pipe that runs, if we just go back a bit. Yeah. So currently, there's a single line concrete pipe that runs between here and here, the wastewater treatment plant at Green Island. There's a twin culvert bit in this zone here to enable them to finish abundant the hillside here to protect or to skewer or to shield, I guess, what would determine the impact the landfill was having on the neighbours and to stop a wind gully through here. So if this ever fails, we're in trouble as a city to process sewage waste into this plant. So upgrading this actually solves two problems. It enables the hillside landfill to be finished into this hillside here, which is where the original closure model was designed. And it also provides extra resilience. So if everyone sort of fires, you can close it down and repair the other sewer. So there was actually a study done by Becker in about 2005, or somewhere around there, which looked at all the sewage upgrade options. And this is why there was a, this is why this section here was twin walled. There was some hard ideas and other things that were put on at the time.
Okay, thank you. Mr Hannon, thank you very much for that. And we really do appreciate your providing that to us so we can circulate it amongst councillors. Thank you. Dr Griffin.
Welcome in.
Okay. Kirola. Floor is yours. Thank you very much. Myself and this is Murray Bailey, who is the commercial director at the museum, have come along to speak to you about our submission this year. As I'm sure you're all aware, we did ask for consideration for an increase of funding for the museum because our baseline funding has been flat for a number of years. And I'm here today to report that encouraging talks are in progress with regards to potential solutions to the challenges that we have. And we just wanted to come here and say thank you for the ongoing support of the museum. And because I think we calculated that we would be the last speakers before lunch, we decided not to PowerPoint you, but we did bring a copy of our new strategic plan, which was approved by our board last week, which I'm happy to distribute. It talks about the things that we've done in the last five years and the things we'd like to do over the next five to 10 years. And just to be brief, we believe that our museum has almost unique challenges in New Zealand. Because of history, in the 1860s, Dunedin was a very wealthy city. And during that period, we acquired some incredible tonga for our local citizens to enjoy. And the challenges of looking after nearly a million and a half objects, which in many cases are unique, as unique as. cases are unique, as unique as some of those held by our national institution. In fact, this morning, I was listening to Radio New Zealand and there was a report about the new Natural Science Gallery at Te Papa, which is opening at the weekend at a cost of twelve million dollars, and they made a big deal about the moa egg. Well, we've got three. My point being not to compete, but just to point out that the moa egg in Te Papa is supported by every taxpayer of New Zealand. The three moa eggs that we have in our collection are relying on a ratepayer base of about a hundred thousand people. So, I think there is a case to be made that operational funding for regional museums such as ours should be considered by those in Wellington. And we aren't here today, you know, to, to say we have a solution to that challenge, but we would look round the table and encourage all of, all of you to try and get behind any opportunities that we might have to, to raise that at the national level. That being said, we are very encouraged by the discussions we're having with the council officers and they have been very supportive to the needs of the museum. And I think the operational funding for the museum is going to hopefully be sustainable for the next few years. We do have another challenge, which is the fact that the museum has an estate that dates back to eighteen seventy-seven. The most recent main gallery that was renovated was Southern Lands, Southern People in the two thousand era. Again, going back to our Te Papa analogy, Te Papa opened in around two thousand, late nineties, and they're already renovating the entire museum. The last time we renovated a gallery was in two thousand. We estimate it's going to cost about thirty to forty, maybe even fifty million dollars to renovate every gallery at our museum and that's a capital funding that we, we don't know where it's going to come from at this time. So, you'll see when you read our strategic plan that a main piece of work for us to do in the next six months is to create a master plan for the development of the entire museum. And that will detail how we're going to ensure that the cultural material which is in our care is looked after for the next hundred and fifty years. So, in summary, we're here today to say thank you for your ongoing support. We really do appreciate it and we do look forward to working with councillors going forward to help solve some of the challenges that we face as an institution.
Thank you, Ian. To preface my question, which is somewhat rhetorical, I'd have to say that we probably agree entirely with you that there should be central government funding for nationally significant museum collections. However, are you aware that the question has already been put to the government and the response came from the Prime Minister?
I wasn't aware of that, no.
And it was fairly emphatic.
Well, minds can be changed.
Yes, I'm not saying we won't go try, but I'm just pointing out that we have done this before. Tried, tried already. Councillor Wilson?
Just for clarity, while we, the Atagi Museum redeveloped a gallery in two thousand, being the Southern Lands, and my memory may be wrong, but I don't know that the Pacific Gallery has ever been changed in my lifetime. How old do you think that, that gallery has?
Well, some of, some of the galleries do go back a considerable way. I mean, the Pacific Gallery, I think, got its original form in the late sixties. There was even talk of... So, these are the challenges we face because obviously, we had a hui recently with some Pacifica folks who made it very clear to us that they are not particularly inspired by the present form of the gallery. And our, our response to that is we would love to change it too, but we need to make sure that we get the finances to do that in an appropriate way. And redoing galleries is not a cheap thing, unfortunately.
Councillor, councillor Elder?
Thank you, dear. A question and a point. I, I might believe that probably Atagi Museum would have one of the top educational facilities from museums in New Zealand. Would that be a fair judgement, do you think?
I think...
As compared to other museums?
Certainly compared to other museums, I, you know, I wouldn't want to disparage my colleagues, but I would, I would say that the, especially over the last five years as we've redeveloped a number of our educational facilities, I think we have facilities that are the equal of any in, in the country. And those facilities have also received national recognition through awards and things like this. So, I do believe that the young people of this region have outstanding opportunities when they visit the museum to learn about science, technology, engineering arts and maths. And I think it's good and proper, as, as someone who lives here, I think it's really important that our kids don't go to Wellington or Auckland to have these experiences, they can go to their local museum. So, I would argue, yes, you're probably right on that.
The next question is, do you think that package that you've offered, which you've invested a lot of money in, would be worthy of asking for extra funding from central government in, in and of itself, from, for its contribution to, to education?
Well, you should remember that we, we, we receive significant sponsorship for those galleries already, but one of the things that they have opened up by investing in things like the Planetarium and Tahura, we are now in receipt of significant amounts of MBIE funding for public outreach and public engagement. So, the capital investment that we made in the facilities is now allowing us to do a lot of outreach across this part of New Zealand and actually beyond. So, we are already in receipt. I think last year, we got something like three hundred thousand dollars of MBIE funding, which is money that's not ratepayer funding and that's all supporting work in the local communities. So, it would be lovely to get more, but we are getting some.
Oh, congratulations on all that work, by the way.
Thank you.
Ian, thank you, and Mike, thank you. And can I just again express our appreciation of your energetic commitment to the quality of the museum, of Atagi Museum, of which we are all extremely proud and a good deal of that's down to you and your staff.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, no, sorry. There's a really exciting news story going to come out tomorrow.
Excellent.
To do with the museum. It will be, I, I can't tell you.
Thank you. Councillors, we have done pretty well. We, five minutes ahead of time, but we will return here at half past one. Councillor Wilson?
Sorry. I'm not quite sure when the opportunity is to ask staff to report on this, just, and it was in the other council meeting, so it may not be appropriate, but it does go down to our fee setting at the annual plan deliberations. There were comments about our building consent charges being significantly higher than elsewhere and I would like to understand that situation.
I followed up on that already. Our inspection fees are not double those of Christchurch. In fact, they're twenty-five dollars less than Christchurch's in general and our overall consenting fees are slightly less than that of Christchurch. It might be there was a mistake in understanding, I, I think you said you thought that the, the inspection fee was twice what you paid for the, for the five hundred dollars for the designer. In actual fact, the entire consent fee for you was about eight hundred dollars. That includes one inspection. I don't think we've had an inspection yet, but that's, that eight hundred dollars wasn't the cost of the inspection. I asked the chaps to go and have a check. So, there might have just been a misunderstanding. We'll have a look at the invoice to ensure that it was worded correctly.
The designer who does a lot of these has assured me that my eight hundred dollar fee would be half if I'd done the same thing in Christchurch. I was just passing that on as an example, but I noted that it may not be across the board.
No, well, might be mistaken.